I'd like to call the order of the City of Sagatuck City Council Meeting for May 12th, 2025. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I have the pledge of allegiance with the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Earl, will you call the roll?
Anderson.
Here.
Your team, Gardner.
Here.
Muncie.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Stan.
Here.
We have a quorum. Um, Mayor's comments. I'm going to touch ever so briefly on the Pride Month proclamation. Um, I made the mistake of, uh, reading comments in social media, uh, after we had repainted the sidewalk. And so saw the chatter about, you know, why do we do this? And, um, you know, as somebody who has, um, been an out lesbian since I was, you know, in high school, it's important to have spaces where we all feel like we belong and where we're included. And the reason I came to Sagatuck, um, was because when I was in the early eighties, when I was living in Chicago, Sagatuck was the place you could come. And, um, I probably wouldn't live here because, you know, it's how I came to know Sagatuck. And what kind of brought it all full circle for me, um, was I got to officiate a wedding in the Rose Garden on Friday, which was just, I'm getting goosebumps. It was one of the coolest things in the world. It was a young lesbian couple and their two moms who were their witnesses and their dog, Bridgette. Um, and, um, so when we, you know, went to walk over there, we walked on the pride sidewalk and over to the Rose Garden. And I said, well, how did you end up choosing? It was their first time in Sagatuck. I was like, well, how'd you end up choosing? And they had Googled gay friendly places to get married in Michigan. And here they came. Um, and it's just, um, it was kind of a, it was just a really meaningful thing. And it's important that we make people feel welcome, whether it's the sidewalks or, you know, the history months that we do. Um, and just, you know, listening to one another. And, um, anyway, it made me very, very proud to be part of Sagatuck and very happy to be a resident. So I will be delighted to sign that proclamation. Ryan, welcome back.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I am now married, so I, uh, we had a great wedding and a great honeymoon. And, uh, just really appreciate all of your, uh, well wishes and, and support. And, uh, so, uh, we're very happy and, uh, great to go on the honeymoon and come back, you know, refreshed and, uh, and still while I'm, you know, it was overseas in Italy, still looking at how they do things, how they have outdoor patios, how their traffic and, and parking patterns are set up. And looking, you know, we toured, uh, you know, Pompeii and, uh, you know, the sea, um, how, you know, uh, you know, in ancient times, uh, they were dealing with their stormwater, wastewater and crosswalks and, and water. And it was, uh, you know, little things like that are still always interesting to me and government's always with me. So I, but I appreciate the well wishes. Uh, thank you to the team for, for covering while I was gone, especially Scott and, and everyone else that, uh, covered my duties while I was gone. So I could, uh, have a stress free honeymoon and, uh, enjoy the, uh, my time with Lisa. Um, I hear the election went really well. So kudos to the, uh, the clerics team and all the election workers on another successful election. One thing I failed to mention at your last meeting, uh, I wanted to give Luke, uh, some, some kudos. So following your changes to your, uh, short-term rental ordinance, you know, Luke did a lot of really great work and getting, um, you know, notice out there to all the short-term rental owners, which led to like a bombardment of, uh, emails and phone calls. And, uh, he spent an incredible amount of time, uh, being proactive, answering questions, helping folks through, uh, the process. And so I really want to commend him, uh, and his work on that. Um, uh, Maple Street, the design engineering, everything is, is, is already underway, uh, to the point where, uh, I only spent, I think I spent a couple of hours with them, which was the max that I, that I had. But Scott, uh, spent much more time with our, our engineers, literally walking the entirety of Maple Street, going property by property, looking at every tree. Where is the exact placement where the sidewalk, you know, should go? Where should we, you know, route this? Where should we put this stormwater improvement in? Uh, so a lot of really painstaking care. Um, they're going to get everything kind of, uh, updated on the, uh, the conceptual plans, uh, to about a, probably a 30% level. We'll hold another open house, get further feedback from, uh, uh, the Maple Street residents and folks that, uh, are interested in the project just to, uh, see that we're on the right track. And then assuming that, that, um, you know, we'll take that feedback and then they're going to continue on with their engineering work. So we can, uh, aim to, to get that project done, um, next year. But I just wanted to let you know that the amount of detail that was involved and really, you know, every step of the way in looking at that project, a lot of great work by, uh, by them. It was fascinating to hear Scott and engineers kind of, oh, well, look at this here. Well, actually I'm seeing this over here. I think we need to think about this. So they did a great job. Uh, and then lastly, a big thank you to, uh, while I was gone, Ferry Street, um, reopened, uh, ahead of schedule. So, uh, kudos to Douglas and, and their engineers and contractors and everyone else for, uh, getting that work done ahead of time. Everyone's patience as we went throughout the project and, and then Douglas with their, uh, great communication as we went along. And, uh, it's always helpful to see the photos too of, of what's going on and what pieces they are working on. It's, um, great to have that back open and, uh, a little shorter commute for some, for some folks as they.
There'll be a great way to turn again.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, that's, that's a huge positive before we, um, get into our busy season. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Great. Thanks, Ryan. Uh, any agenda changes? All right. Uh, and we don't have any guest speakers, right? Uh, okay. Public comments on agenda items only. Anyone in the room wish to make a public comment? Anyone online wish to make a public comment? All right. Uh, saying none, we will move to the consent agenda, which is, uh, on page. Three.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move we approve the consent agenda as provided.
A second.
Uh, and this is roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
The.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Muncie.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
And Stan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, staff reports, we've heard from Ryan. Um, we read, uh, yes.
Of course. I know they're putting together, uh, after talking about Maple Street. When did they think they'll have the first look at it, look at it that we can see with, with where the trees are and the sidewalks and all that?
Um, it sounded like they were thinking maybe within the next month or so seemed to be my understanding.
Perfect.
Scott, am I correct on that? That, that's what your takeaway was as well?
The biggest part is, is the inputs that go into the design. And so once, now that they have most of the inputs that they're looking for, um, it's just a matter of months, uh, if, if that even.
Great. Thank you.
Um, okay, back to, uh, reports. Uh, Treasury, any questions for Ryan on the, or Nikki's on, uh, any questions for Nikki on the Treasurer's report? Uh, any questions for Sarah on the Clerk's report? Uh, any questions on planning and zoning for Ryan to take back to Luke? Uh, any questions on P W? Police, we have Sergeant Haas here. Any questions for him? Thanks for being with us. Uh, and any questions on the engineering report? All right. Uh, that takes us to boards, commissions and committees. Um, Dan, want to give us highlights of the fire district?
Thank you. Our last meeting was whatever it was, a week and a half ago. Um, workshop meeting. So this will be a brief update on that. Um, thank you, sir. Put that up. Um, first one. That's all right. Uh, we, we spent a good deal of time discussing facility expansion, reviewing fire districts' needs, uh, water and sewer upgrades to the current facility. We have too small a water line and it's on septic, which it should not be. Um, sleeping accommodations upgrades, uh, showers and what have you. Sleeping accommodations are necessary because so many of the firefighters are, you know, live well outside, miles and miles outside the fire district. So they spend time there during their shifts, overnight shifts. Uh, apparatus housing, the fire trucks and whatnot is depending who you want to talk to, either at or slightly beyond the limits of the current facility. And then the southern response area limitations, which will lead me into my next, the next point that we spent a lot of time on, not that one, that one. We were, we met at the Douglas Municipal Building at Wiley and, and, uh, Blue Star, Southeast corner there. Uh, and the reason we did was because that property is a candidate property for the, uh, for the, uh, location of a, the southern, could you go back to one more back? Please, I'm sorry, Sarah. That's all right. I gotta go through those other.
About it. So.
Yeah, you're good. Don't worry. Because we were visiting that property as a candidate or possible uh, economically advantaged expansion, which has a whole bunch of advantages. Uh, and Douglas and the fire district have already been in fairly hard to characterize, fairly extensive discussions and on the verge of a non-binding letter of agreement of some sort. Anyway, the fire board toured the property. And as you may know, Kathy North, who's Mayor of Douglas, is on the fire boards. Helps a little bit. And that letter, non-binding letter of intent is in works. They also spent a good deal of time talking about how we're going to afford this, how we're going to fund it. Um, the initial thinking on Douglas's part, they don't need the southernmost portion, southern, I, I would guess it's about a quarter of that building, maybe a third. They don't need it. They're not renovating it. Their renovations are the remainder, the other two thirds of the building to the north. Uh, so the south part remains as it was when it was a, uh, Allen Hospital affiliated, maybe you had blood taken there, you had PT down there or whatever. Those are those internal, uh, uh, developments, internal improvements on that property remain exactly as they are. And when you look at them in great detail, which I assure you the chief has and his people have, they are virtually in move-in condition for the fire district's needs, minor modifications here and there. So that's a big advantage. That building was also built and modified by the, by the hospital to a very high standard. Doors are thick, solid doors, walls are solid. So when comparing costs, it's, you can almost not duplicate today for the kind of money that you would have available, the same level of construction. So anyway, we talked, uh, funding Douglas has talked, we've talked, none of this is even close to final. But they've talked about, uh, potential condominium kind of arrangement that would, that would have the fire district acquiring that portion of that property. And now you can look at the next one. So this is the, and I have this on a sheet of paper. If you want to see it, I don't know how visible it'll all be, but you get the basic idea. The yellow square that does not have hash markets and hash marks on it is the, uh, portion of the existing building that is involved. The hash marked area and the little connection would be to a three bay equipment apparatus. Uh, uh, garage and related turnout gear storage and turnout gear cleaning and a few other things, but primarily apparatus storage. The thinking is if this comes to pass, those, the apparatus would exit the building in response to calls to the right as you're looking at the, uh, to the east as you're looking at the chart and then go down behind the buildings and out onto Wiley Street. And the reason for that, as opposed to the reverse, is that ultimately, and perhaps not all that long, a stoplight is planned for that corner and potentially even a roundabout at that corner. In either case, that would make entry of the emergency vehicles much safer than sitting with the lights going at the end of a driveway, waiting for people coming off Blue Star, having driven from Chicago to realize we need to get on there. So, uh, sure.
Uh, when you say apparatus, does that mean fire trucks?
Yeah.
Fire trucks there?
Three bays.
You don't have fire trucks on that side of the bridge?
Three doors on each side. So where they come, come back, they come back in on, on this way. Yeah. And that's, uh, you probably know this, but there's a whole list of reasons in terms of mission-related reasons, not least of which is response times to the south, also response times to the peninsula, certainly response times to Oval Beach, because they start from a closer spot, don't have to deal with in the summer, traffic in Douglas, you just go. Um, maybe most important, the southern and eastern portion of the township. So basically everything from, I just forget what that is, the road to Fendel, is that 89? Yeah, 89 north and east to the, uh, far end of the township and Douglas are slated for some significant development over time. And that's where the land is available and that's where people are. You drive out that way sometime and go off on some of those roads you've probably never been on. You go, my God, there's a new house. Oh, there's another new house. There's another new house. So that's where it's coming from, which only makes this more attractive. Um, again, these are all very preliminary plans. I'm happy to talk more about it. Nothing is set in stone. The, this would be, it's, it's referred to, I think, on, on the chart there is the south, south station, the north station would remain as it is and be able to move people and resources back and forth as is necessary. But in any case, we eliminate the, the river crossing and the traffic related there too. Chief estimates a, a minute and a half improvement on this, on calls to the south, calls to the Douglas end, the south. So, um, as I say, things like millage and how we're going to pay for it and whatever, the dirty word millage, uh, remain to be, remain to be discussed. And if you're interested, that's a big item on the agenda for a week. This evening, four o'clock at the fire, firehouse. And one more real quick. I know we've harped on this. You probably, one more, Sarah. Probably tired of me hearing it. If you, anybody went to Tulip Time, you saw this level of security, which was extremely impressive to the chief. And where those, the hash marks, the yellow and black hash marks, those are concrete barriers. Uh, and these were, these and the Archer barriers that the city owns were all over that parade route. And this is something, I mean, chief can be a subject matter expert in this area, but you guys have the responsibility for the safety. So I just point this out because it's so close by. And subsequent to this, two people have mentioned that it was their understanding, like this, that, that it was contract, done by contract. A contractor came in, provided these and pulled them out. Obviously everything costs money. But it, it can make some sense when you're limited on resources, on people, on equipment, all the rest of it, to have a company, whoever they are. Anyway, we'll be looking more into that as well. That's all I have. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, when you say contractor, those were the contractors barriers?
Yes, that, those are the Archer barriers, which if you've gone to the, uh, farmer's market up there, they're on both ends of the farmer's market. They're kind of about this wide and they look like, you've seen them. Those are Holland's property. These I do not, I believe these are the contractors. Cause they're not, those aren't Jersey barriers, like the ones that have the, the broad base that when you tip over, the vehicle goes up in the air. These are just plain concrete, which not going to be easy to get a vehicle past.
And I had one more question. Uh, on the grants, uh, the chief is always good at grants. Is there a possibility of looking at a grant to shoot?
We've already, we've already in touch with, it's, as you know, grants, as everybody knows, grants are, are own challenge. But we've been in touch and provided the basis and some rough cost numbers to Joey Andrews's office. And that's sort of started that ball. Apparently it's even more, the process is more challenging because they're, you know, somehow the, the folks in the, in our elected House of Representatives are fighting with each other and who knows what. But anyway, that process has started and we didn't, we just specified what we took, what the chief took as a wild shot at a total dollar number without saying, well, I come in for 50%, a hundred percent. We let them, you know, he who mentions the number first loses.
Are you talking about the barriers?
No, no, no. I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the building.
I am. I talked about the building. Yeah.
Yeah. No, no, I'm talking about the building.
Great. Thank you.
Gregory, do you have a question?
Uh, just, uh, we, I remember the ones that we talked about that you said about the Holland market, those, those apparatuses that they use. Was it two years ago or so, um, uh, we had, uh, used that, right? We got a promotion to use them of some kind, didn't we? Didn't we, Scott? I believe?
Yes.
Now, yeah, the demo goes. It might be interesting to look into those again and the idea of using those again. I remember the idea coming across where, you know, even businesses could contribute by advertising on them, you know?
They're expens-
They are expensive.
They're expensive. I want to say 3,500 plus. And then you've got to have a trailer to haul them around.
Wow.
So it gets. That's for, what, eight of them, I think?
Nine.
Nine, yeah. And they're, they're kind of.
And to do, but, yeah, and to do Butler Street, you'd probably be 40.
Nice.
I'm, I'm just throwing a number, but I, it's not nine or 10. It's a big number.
Might be good to investigate the company that provides this and does this, just to find out what they.
See if you can find out.
Yeah. Thanks, Madam Mayor. Um, where's the city on, um, I know that we have these, we have the safety meetings. I know James, I was looking over for Jamie, but Jamie's not here. But I know that there's safety meetings that take place between the city, the sheriff's department and the fire district for events and the review. And then the chief, I believe, or a member of this, of the, uh, fire district makes a recommendation on what they think the safety measures should look like for any given event. Have we, have we set a policy in terms of where I'm going with this is that I'm assuming Holland has done the same thing as that. They've said, all right, if you want to have an event in our downtown area, here's what we will provide. Here's what we want safety to look like. And then the event determines what that may be in their budget and et cetera. And I think if we're Sagatuck, you know, we've got, I don't know how many events we have every year. Um, but I think about the ones that get the most attendance are the Fourth of July, Memorial Day parades. Um, you know, do we start to need to think about what policy we have in place? But number two is that maybe we start thinking about limiting where the parades take place, because in that way we can have a more defined space that we have to protect. Uh, cause right now the way I think it works is that the, the organizers tell us what they want the route to look like. And then we accommodate that to the best that we can, as opposed to saying, okay, here's what we're willing to support. And here's what we can, you know, provide in terms of safety, because I know that has created some friction on a couple of events where the chief has made a recommendation. And then we've come to this, we're kind of butting heads because the chief is recommending one thing and we're saying, wow, we really can't afford to do that. So I, I think there's a real policy opportunity here and, and a better way to think about this going forward.
We've, we've had some clarity on, on that process as well, because for example, the fire district does not approve or not approve.
Right.
The routes. They, they have, they're full of suggestions and I think good suggestions and knowledgeable suggestions on what makes sense or whatever. But in the end, it comes down to the city. If you start charging, uh, sponsors, parade sponsors, you watch us, you watch how those routes start to slow, you know, start to get, you know, moved in all by themselves without you having to do anything about it. It's like a thousand dollars. Sure, we can block that street. That's another thousand or whatever.
Yeah. And again, I'm not making a specific recommendation about what we should charge of that applicants. I think what we need to figure out is that kind of middle ground where it's safe. The city can support that, whatever that financial support might look like. And then also encourage these events to occur, because that's what brings a lot of people to town is, are these events. So there's a balance and I just.
Here.
Yep. And I just think from a policy standpoint, I think there's an opportunity here to get this right. Maybe not this season, but have some conversations about what that looks like.
I know the chief was, uh, careful of my words, but a little disappointed. He, apparently some comments he made in whatever last, the last meeting, such meeting, uh, with the city and so on and so forth, were misinterpreted that he supported the use of the water-filled barriers. He does not. For reasons of the cost in terms of the equipment, time and effort to fill those and unfill them. Uh, the, the likelihood that that would be the fire department's, somehow be the fire department's responsibilities, which does not work. Um, and the, maybe the most important last, those are not, you can push those aside. With a good smack of a vehicle, those two will go this way, where they'll tip over in this way. Try and push those aside, they're going to stop.
If, if I may, if I may, I guess I'm a bit surprised to hear that, because I remember in this chamber asking specifically if the fire department was going to take on the role of filling them. And then I was told yes. And then DPW would, would take on the role of draining them. So I'm surprised to hear this.
Why don't we, Brian, do you have anything you want to?
Yeah, just to say, I, 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 it's, it's been a little while since I've sent it and we can, um, you know, revisit it if need be. But, you know, for this, this year, I think, I, I think the fire department, sheriff's department and, and the city, we're all on the same page as far as a, a plan for this summer. Are they, from an operational perspective, we've identified exactly that, that we need to restrict routes. Uh, they should be the same route. Uh, so we know, uh, and the event organizers know what resources are needed to do a particular parade. So where is a dedicated parade route? Uh, the exceptions to that are the Fourth of July parade, which is bigger. And then the homecoming parade, uh, which have a different route. So it's essentially two routes, um, that we've kind of narrowed it to. Um, and, and that way the maps all show what, what the necessary resource needs are. And then, um, you know, we've, uh, taken the approach of, um, given that we don't have Archer barriers at this point, and there's obviously, um, still cost and time considerations with moving large cement barriers like, um, that, that, um, the use of, of vehicles is still a viable, uh, option. Um, having volunteers do that, um, as long as they're signing waivers and, and understand that they're, they're taking on that, that risk. And so I think we're, uh, we did discuss, you know, protecting the pedestrian, um, entry points a little bit more with some water-filled barricades. And, um, we've had some recommendations from the, the chief on options for that. I, I think, lest I knew, or we're just kind of waiting on specific locations for those and maybe firming up details on what we should order. But, uh, actually we discussed with all of you that, that proposal and, and, uh, you were all, we're all supportive of that. And the fire department indicated that they would build a water-filled barricades that were on the pedestrian pathways. Um, for us was the last bit of information that I got from the, the fire department. So.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
You, you said we've got the routes for the, the parades. Are they different from what they were before?
They're different than that. Were they, for a while, there was some parades that were going down Water Streets. Um, so it differs from that. And I think it actually, the route really, my understanding, uh, returns to a more traditional route where, uh, it's essentially just kind of going down Butler instead of extending out, uh, onto Water Streets and having more roads.
Where, where do they start then? And where do they?
I used to do a lot of the parades. So you're right. That's kind of my fault, because I wanted to do Water Street and Butler Street back when I was doing parades. So when I ran the Christmas parade, that's what we did. We started at Wick's Park and at a big circle. I wanted to go both streets. And, uh, and then some of the kids Halloween parade, uh, I used to have that route as well. So.
So what is it now?
Yeah. So I think the new route is now from Mason up to Coler, Coler over to Butler, then Butler up to, um, where did we land on that? Francis is where we ended up. Cause I know we had some discussion about one block or, or two, whether or not to extend it there. So that's essentially the, the main route.
For, for Memorial Day, we'll be staging over by the, the other side of Lulu Kadoo, going down the street and then on Butler, which is essentially the new Christmas parade route as well. Uh, just, just for a bit of, yeah, just for a bit of context. I, I was, you know, it's, it's impressive what Holland did. Um, you know, Tulip Time is actually a, uh, it's an incorporated organization. It's a 501(c)(3) with their own office. So it's a, it's a very sophisticated, um, well-funded organization.
Yeah. Well, we had some, you know, meetings to discuss parade safety in the, the winter months. I, I did reach out to the city manager, Van Beek in Holland and kind of inquired with them about how they're handling, you know, all their parades. And so they don't do this level of detail for all of their, their parades. Just Tulip Time is a much bigger beast and they're bringing in, you know, helicopters and, uh, other security measures, a lot more depth, their security measures, given the, the, the size of the crowds. But, um, for their other, you know, parades, they're not going, you know, quite to this level. So it's my understanding from him.
Uh, it may, and I don't have the answer for you, but it may be worth, if not for Memorial Day, maybe for Fourth of July, pursuing whether this contractor, as you mentioned, this contractor thing exists, because they're obviously not going to be tied up in Tulip Time. It's got to be some, if they had enough for that, they got enough for a regular parade in Holland and here at the same time. It would help. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, Gregory.
Well, you know, I, uh, updated everybody at our last meeting on April 28th. But I'll just do a really quick recap. Um, we have expanded our service area. We're covering three stops in Fendel now for only a dollar. You can go to the grocery store there, Wagoneers, uh, or the post office or Ladders of Hope. Um, also for only a dollar, you can get, uh, door-to-door service throughout Lake Town Township and, um, And, um, uh, the, the program with Fenville will last about two years. And the contract that we have with Lake Town Township will end in October. It's a pilot run in hopes that if a lot of people use it, it seems that we need to keep doing that. We've also got three special rides for five dollars to all of our, uh, our wineries, uh, or three of our wineries, uh, Modalis, uh, Virtue Cider and also Fenn Baff. So for five dollars from anywhere, Lake Town Township, Fenville or Sagatuck, you can take a ride out to one of our beautiful wineries. Um, and I also said that in March two thousand twenty-four, it was, I keep saying it every month, another record month. We have, uh, uh, almost forty-five-hundred passengers, just, just one month and it's. Um, and that's an increase of two hundred and sixty home riders for last year. And our afternoons are getting busier. Uh, we are in the process right now, finally at the design build, we're in the design process. So we expect to go from design to construction quickly. Um, uh, we'll probably be breaking ground in the next, maybe two months on expanding our, um, our facility there, adding an extra bathroom and, uh, and expanding the, you know, uh, the building. So, uh, other than that, our next meeting is on May twentieth. Oh, uh, we did have our director's performance review at our last meeting and, uh, Becky received, uh, uh, pretty good, uh, stars for all the great work she's done by expanding services and, uh, and her relationship with, um, our employees is great. He's got a great, uh, working relationship with, uh, our employees.
That's great. Thanks, Gregory. Uh, Joe, Cow Lake Sewer and Water. Great, uh, Chris?
Yes, uh, Greg Wykoff has agreed to take on the project, um, for the, the harbor. And the money has already been put into the next budget for all three communities. And, uh, that first meeting with him will be July eighth. Um, on the no-wake survey, Daniel was going to send me the update because they're keeping a TikTok count of that, but we couldn't get it to go through. Uh, but one of the discussions we will need to have is when we're going to cut that off. Is it going to be, are we going to give them one last blast and say, get this in by such and such a time or just a dead date? So, and I'm sure you guys are working on which would be best for the staff.
Great. Thanks, Chris. Um, anything for ZBA, Brian? I don't think there is.
Uh, there's that.
Okay, uh, Russ's Stark District?
Yeah, thank you. We met on Thursday, May first. Um, we had three items that we had to discuss. One was a replacement of, um, so for the Killens Building on the corner of, um, Mason and Butler. When you walk in the door, you'll notice some, you'll notice some tile on the, on the, on the entry. And, um, it was during a, uh, I, I think it was a storm, had caused some damage to a portion of the, um, um, inlay tile. And so Killens came to ask about replacing the tile, but only a portion of it. So it's kind of an interesting conversation because if you go into Killens, you might not even notice this there, but it's a, uh, one of the commissioners called it a, um, I forget the word that she used, but it, but it's like a little, um, you don't even notice until you, until it was gone. It's that kind of thing. It's been there forever. And, uh, to, to Killens credit, they were very cognizant of the fact that this is kind of, uh, this is something important to the building and to the, to the streetscape. So, uh, they asked if they could, uh, replace part of that with cement, which the historic district commission approved. So it's just one of those little details in the historic district that you may not even notice until you walk by it. So next time you're there, take a look. Um, and, uh, may not seem important to most folks, but that's the kind of work that the historic district commission does. And I want to thank Killens for their attention to that detail. Um, also the Butler Pantry Building, interestingly enough, if you stand in front of the building, look at the window to the left. Apparently the, the, the window has started to rot and it's settled. And there's actually a gap at the top of the window and it's caused some issues. And so they came with a very detailed, um, plan to replace that window with a like window. Um, and it's amazing the amount of detail and effort that goes into maintaining the historical integrity of some of these buildings. It's, it's, I mean, it's really, to the credit of the, of the person that was here, uh, I forget the gentleman's name, but just the detail and the planning and the care and concern that people put into their historic properties is, is something to be commended and, 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 and we're very pleased with that. And the last one was approval of a marker at Cofflin Park to replace the sign that's in the northeast corner. That's going to be replaced with another of our, uh, becoming famous, um, historic signs in town. Um, the other thing too is that there were some administrative approvals. One I'll mention specifically is one oh two Butler Street, which is actually the city hall, but it wasn't for here. That was an application on behalf of the city to replace the decking at the ferry landings. So that was approved. Um, and actually we'll be talking a little bit about some of the placement of the arbors over the, um, landings as well. And we have some other administrative approvals and we meet again on the fifth of June.
Great, thanks. Uh, Joe, anything for planning? Awesome. Uh, PPW?
Yeah, we haven't met. Uh, our next meeting is May twenty-seventh, so.
Okay. Um, uh, Scott, track community, non-motorized, anything new?
No, no, nothing new.
Okay. And then anything new on the water systems operating contract advisory committee?
Not at this point.
Okay. And then back to you, Scott, Scott on wildlife management.
Yes, we, we met on Wednesday and, uh, the fire department came and showed us, uh, some results of some of their drone work. And, um, what they've, what they've observed with the drone is, I think, similar to the anecdotal evidence that the, the public has been sharing, you know, with everyone, with each other. In, in one night they observed, I believe it was something like, like seventy-nine deer congregated in the area, kind of between like Wiley and Campbell and, and Blue Star. You know, that's sort of the hotspot for, for a huge her, herd of deer. If, if you know it, you'll, you always see them there. So we talked about some other areas to target. Um, for whatever reason, the drone operator was interested in, in, um, Sagatuck Wilds area. Uh, the, the Sagatuck representatives and myself included, along with our township counterparts, said, we probably don't need to focus on the Sagatuck Wilds area. And so we've, we've suggested the drone operator continue to focus, uh, from Campbell Road all the way toward into the Oxbow to, to see that area. And to maybe look a bit closer at, uh, the Peterson Preserve on this side of, of the river. Uh, I think it's becoming increasingly clear that, that the, the, the real concentration of, of animals is on that side of the river. And it, and basically it's, you, you know, in terms of, it's the edge of like Douglas and the Township going basically toward, toward the Oxbow. So that work continues. We went over some homeowner association guidelines. Um, Douglas wanted something fairly prescriptive. Um, I think that was based on some feedback from the Douglas Police Department, wanting to really be a bit more involved. My view and, and my colleagues from, from Sagatuck, we, we kind of pushed back a little bit that we, we thought it would make more sense to be as close to state regs as possible and avoid going over state regs because of the burden on staff to try to administer this. Um, also the, the, the legal implications of creating rules that are different than the states, I mean, the, the state of Michigan's rules. So we're, we're going over these, these homeowner association documents again tomorrow, I'm sorry, on, on Wednesday. And I, I think what we're going to come, come back with is going to be something, uh, that's more of a template and more of a guideline uh, that will allow, you know, for example, the dune, dune grasses or the dune ridges of the world or, you know, some of these homeowner associations to sort of have a, a, a template that they can use. So, you know, so they can get organized. Not that these are like hard and fast rules that, that allow them to skirt state DNR regulations around hunting, but to give them, you know, a guide or, you know, a template, if you will, for something they've never done before. Uh, so that's what we're going to work on, try to hash out to bring to the various councils in the near future. So we're going to try to hash that out. We're, you know, we're kind of on critical path now because we're working backwards from, you know, basically an October first deadline was, which is when archery season begins. Um, so, uh, we, we hope to have that for, for you soon and we hope to have some ordinances to be considered. But, uh, you know, my, my current guidance to the council would be to, and to staff would be to think long and hard about putting our first focus on the other side of the river. I think that's where we would get the most bang for the buck, no pun intended. Um, sorry, no bang, just archery. Um, and, um, then think about what we do on this side because it's becoming increasingly clear that that is really the, the hotspot, you know, not just the anecdotal data, but the drone data is clearly showing that's where a massive amount of, of deer are congregating now, so.
Great, thanks.
Thanks.
Questions for Scott? All right, thank you. Uh, takes us to approval of accounts payable. Um, can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor? Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the accounts payable in the amount of two hundred twenty-four thousand nine hundred fifty-four dollars and thirty-two cents.
Any questions before we vote?
Yeah, yeah, Madam Mayor, just, um, just want to note one thing is, uh, we have a street sweeper back on the road. Uh, I talked with, uh, Mr. Herbert, I think before the last meeting, because I happened to see it out on a Monday morning. And, uh, it had been off, it had been out of service for how long? Yeah, yeah. But it had to be taken, had to be taken to Detroit to be repaired, right? Yeah, so anyway, uh, it's good to see that back out and, um, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, it's a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, no public hearings or unfinished business, which takes us to new business fourteen A, setting the fiscal year budget public hearing on page fifty-six.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to schedule the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budget hearing for June fourth at six P M.
Second. Any questions or discussion?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, very glad we're getting this scheduled. This is, uh, something that was suggested at the last workshop. I would, um, ask if the city can do some emails or do some promotion of this event, maybe something in the paper to get folks to attend. That was a real, that was the really idea here was to get folks to come and hear what we're presenting and what's being budgeted. So anything we can do to promote that would be appreciated.
Uh, anything else?
Just, just a note for your calendars and it's the same day that you had a workshop scheduled, uh, that was scheduled for four P M. This would move the time to six P M, so, um, I think that's, this is the date that you all indicated would be fine for that, so.
And our, our deadline to approve a budget is?
Uh, end of June.
End of June, thank you.
All right, this is roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Stanton?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries. Takes us to the replication of chain ferry arbors on page fifty-seven.
Madam Mayor? Um, I'm, I'd like to make a motion to approve the work proposed by Diversified Welding and Fabrication LLC to replicate the steel structures of the chain ferry arbors contingent on approval from the Historic District Commission.
Second.
Uh, discussions, I would ask, Scott, talked about this at our workshop, but questions, further questions? Or comments from you, Scott? Russ?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, uh, Congressman Clark, did you have comment? Oh, okay. Um, yeah, I'm in full support of this. Uh, I'm going to pull back my comment about finding something more period correct because I'm not sure there is anything more period correct. I, I've stopped at the arbors a couple of times just to kind of look and understand. So, um, basically what we have there is going to be pulled and replaced with like. And I noticed that there's, there's, there's a, I don't know, to call them panels that are around the supports.
Yeah.
So those will be replaced as well. So it's going to look pretty much the same as what we see today.
Yep, there are only two differences. Um, you know, basically diversified welding, what's what you're potentially approving tonight is just replicating that, the metal structure underneath. And then public works will follow back through and replace the cedar shake shingles. Uh, re, you know, replace all the brackets that exist on there right now. There's some brackets that hold the chain ferry sign on top. Those are going to be a direct replacement. Uh, we'll probably knock the rust off of it, but, um, but we'll get that looking good. And then, um, but there's two, two notable upgrades. The first is that if you look close at the structure right now, it's actually where it's bolted down to the concrete. It's actually tearing. So that's one-eighth inch thick angle, um, steel angle iron. Um, and that's going to get replaced and upgraded with three sixteenths inch, uh, angle iron, uh, to make that a little more robust. And then, uh, all the bare steel that you, that you can see on the underside of it, that's going to get an epoxy, uh, paint coating on it to protect it from the marine elements. That's it.
Uh, is there a timeline on completion of this?
We would, we, we don't want to disturb. I mean, the season is almost on us. So basically we just want to give diversified welding the, the green light to start creating those structures. Give public work some time to collect materials and then in the fall after Labor Day, we would be able to take care of it.
Okay. So just to set the table here, so the work that's going to be done by diversified welding is pretty clear. Just quickly describe what your DPW teams could be responsible for after it gets put back in place.
So the, the, there's, uh, pine paneling over the columns on each side and that's painted red. So we would, we would replicate those and, and, um, or maybe they're in good enough condition that we could just sand them and, and put them back up the way they are. But, um, but if we're going this distance, we're probably not going to cut corners like that. So, um, after that, there's, um, you know, just the cedar shake, uh, shingles that are on there and replacing the brackets and any miscellaneous hardware. And that's it. It's a pretty simple structure.
I'm excited to see the new. It's going to be nice.
And then, you know, phase three of, of this too. So phase one is already done, just to recap. That was basically, um, taking a look, peeling the decking off, taking a look at the, the metal structure underneath, doing some spot welding, uh, where, where we deem necessary. Engineering helped us decide where those places were. That work has been done. The decking has been pressure washed and then coated with a non-slip surface. Uh, that was finished up today, so they're good and operational for the summer. Uh, phase two is the one that we've discussed. And then phase three is where we'll have, um, probably a little more substance behind the conversations where we, we have, please, and Vanner bring, take a look at the, the mechanics and, and potentially redesign the landing structures. Um, and that, that's where we would probably make some recommended changes, just to make it more functional and aesthetically pleasing.
Yeah. And, and as I mentioned at the workshop, the, and I call them the, the balustrades that are aside each, on the, on the east landing. Um, when I, when I stopped to look at them, I thought they had originally been painted white because in pictures you see from past times, they were white. Has that, has that been something that we've just kind of let go because we, we didn't want to maintain it? Or where I'm going with this is that if we're going to be upgrading and doing this work, why wouldn't we be thinking about making sure? Cause we've got the new pad for the bike rack in there. I'm just, just asking generally if, if, yeah, if there's any plan or discussion about that.
Definitely take a look at it and see if there's any indicators that it used to be painted white. Definitely.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, it's, uh, roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Stanton?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, moving on to C, streetlight removal request on Upper Spear, page sixty-one.
Mayor? Motion to have consumers' energy deactivated or removed the streetlight located near five-five-five Spear Street, streetlight ID number one-eight-eight-three-four-eight.
Second. Um, I know we talked about this, it's fair detail, the workshop, but are there other questions?
I just have a question. Are we doing, um, I know one, like the removal was a cost of like four hundred and some odd dollars. Deactivating was zero dollars, is that correct? So are we saying one or the other? I'm, my indication would be to deactivate it, not remove it. So we're not, one, paying for it and two, if anything needs to be reactivated sometime, it's still there.
Yeah, that's just. And I think that was Scott, he had checked with consumers to find out, even if it's deactivated, there's still costs that we would have to pay, you know, for the, the light being there. I don't know that he's heard back from them yet, and I think that's kind of why we're.
I, I, I have, and I reached out just for, you know, based on the discussion that we had, you know, because our, but the ideal scenario is that, um, that Dan Sheridan was right. We do play, we do pay a flat fee for, uh, the number of streetlights that we have based on quantity. Um, so essentially we've been paying for the streetlight that's been out for however many years that's been. But so in a perfect world, you know, we would be able to have the light deactivated, but we could also have consumers take that quantity down a notch so that we're not paying for it. I've, I've made the ask, I haven't heard back yet.
Okay.
And then while, um, while I was communicating with them too, I also asked about relocating the shroud.
Okay. That's great.
Yes, I, I think going back to the discussions, I remember it was that I think we kind of, I moved forward to just deactivate it as opposed to remove it. Um, and, and I would be not in support of, of removing it. Uh, one of the reasons if it should ever have to go back up, we couldn't even get them to bring a shroud in. Can you imagine it would be like to try to have them put a post in, a new light? So, um, I, I'm not happy with the, or remove in, in the motion.
You're not happy with the what?
Or remove.
Oh, okay.
Um, if it's possible to just, uh, deactivate it, I would be in favor of that.
Yeah, it would be.
So do, uh, we need to withdraw the motion and reword it?
That's fine.
Okay. Uh, Lauren, would you like to withdraw your motion?
Scott?
Yeah.
Scott, sorry.
I'll, I'll withdraw and amend the motion. Can I do that?
Yes.[1777.61]
All right, I'll, let me read it again.
All right.
No, that's okay.
That's fine. Uh, motion to have consumers' energy, uh, deactivate the streetlight located near five-five-five Spear Street, Streetlight ID number one-eight-eight-three-four-eight.
Now again, second that.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion or questions? This.
You know, when I saw this in our, uh, internal packet, um, for the, uh, workshop, there originally I thought, why, you know, I think safety first, you know, and I thought, you know, safety was the most important thing. But after, you know, driving down in that area and, and taking a look at it myself, and the overwhelming neighbors that were all affected by that light, almost everybody that lived in that area, um, uh, found that light as a nuisance. And, uh, with Nancy Kimball coming and explaining, uh, some things to us as well, uh, convinced me that, um, uh, it, uh, that convinced me of my vote to, uh, to deactivate this light.
The concern I had was, um, around precedent setting, and I know Chris raised that as well, but given that they had thirty years without the light, precedent is without the light.
Right.
I don't think we want to get into the business of one-off, um, streetlight, um, you know, change requests, cause that would be a burden to staff, but I can work my head around that. Russ?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, um, I do want to just put on record, the thirty years is just, I don't know where that figure came from because I remember as a kid, not too long ago, there, there being a light there. So that thirty years may not necessarily be the right number, just put that on the record. I'm gonna be a no on this, and let me, and let me, let me tell you why. The city should consider, we had a lot of discussion about reevaluating a dark sky initiative and policy. I'm, I'm fully on board with that. I look forward to having more conversations about that. But it's prudent to delay approving streetlight removal requests or deactivation requests until there's a comprehensive citywide plan to reduce ambient light pollution within city limits. Um, I'm sure we'll find other places in town, and there's already one request, I believe, coming from Park Street, which will be very similar to this, to remove the light because it's a nuisance and/or creates issues. While acknowledging the concerns of residents regarding the streetlights, I'm voting against its removal or deactivation. This decision aligns with the recommendations of both staff and the city engineer, who suggests that all potential solutions be considered first. Uh, in my opinion, turning off or removing the light is the last option available here. Alternatives such as adjusting the angle of the light or installing a shroud should be thoroughly examined. Streetlights play a crucial role in ensuring pedestrian driver safety during nighttime hours. Therefore, it's imperative to find a solution that addresses the residents' concerns while also maintaining public safety.
Thanks.
Well, I'll just add, uh, I appreciate the comment on the dark skies initiative, and it reminded me, um, Clerk Walters, uh, during our workshop, said she was gonna try to find the presentation that was given to this council. I think it was in twenty twenty-two. She did find it, and, uh, she, she sent that presentation and the contact details of one of the local dark sky representatives, that, if the gentleman still lives in Fenville. Um, she sent that to a few people, I believe yourself and the mayor, and, um, she also, I think, was gonna send it to the PPW committee, which has, I think, one PPW member who has been tasked with looking at dark skies again. So, uh, a discussion to be continued, I think.
Anything else? Okay, this is a voice vote. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Uh, motion carries six to one. Um, okay, takes us to fourteen D, Addendum to Trash Services Agreement on page sixty-seven.
Uh, if I may.
Yes, please.
The, the agreement before you, the clean version of it is slightly different than the one that was in the workshop packet. So, um, after getting the preliminary feedback from council last Wednesday, um, you know, bounced this off of Republic Services, they came back and with a couple of minor changes to it. Uh, one being underneath the, uh, Public Works where it outlined originally for a two-day service, uh, upon staff, uh, request. Uh, Republic wanted to bump that back to three days just to, uh, better protect themselves and be able to, to hold true to the agreement, uh, which from my perspective, I'm fine with. Um, they're usually, they're, they're usually within a day or so, about a day later for service. And if they get, you know, overloaded or near holiday weekends, if it takes them up to a few days, we're, we're fine with that. Um, and then the container out at the Oval Beach, um, the language in the, the, uh, draft, uh, agreement indicated that that uh, receptacle would get, um, delivered and, and removed every year. That, that container stays on site all year. So there's really no need for that language in there. In fact, it's financially better if, if we do just leave it. Republic is good with that. Um, we have a dedicated space for it, and it's hidden within a fenced-in dumpster area, so it really is of no consequence. But, um, so we omitted that language from the draft agreement, and then, um, Republic wanted to just clarify that to, if, if we did opt to remove that dumpster for the winter time, for some reason, we would pay a ninety-five dollar, uh, delivery fee to have it dropped off, and then another ninety-five dollar fee to have it picked back up. So, uh, those are the only changes. That was bounced back and forth between legal and Republic, and, um, we were able to come up with a clean copy for you tonight.
Thanks. Any questions?
The, the term, uh, carries through with the other. We were wrong about the term of the other, other residential services agreement that we have. Uh, it was a four-year agreement that we signed late last year.
This is, this was shifting from, wasn't this with Arrow Waste? And so we, we moved from Arrow Waste and added it to our existing Republic contract. It's the Oval Beach.
I'm gonna have to give motion first.
Uh.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve the addendum to the Tri Service Agreement as presented.
Second.
Uh, discussion comments?
Yeah, I'm still not, it's not that big. You're, you're especially. Stand by the, the management side.
Give you a little bit more context as to, um, cause I hear you. I mean, it's locking in a four-and-a-half percent, uh, increase. Originally, they were at, at least on the residential side, it was six percent. Um, and we, you know, based in your direction, we were able to get them down to that, that four-and-a-half percent or CPI, whichever was higher. Um, but to give you an idea of what we were, we're trying to solve for here, and I apologize, and it's, I know Scott was looking at today, so it's buried in my emails somewhere, but so several months ago, I mean, I flagged, we were, we were essentially at, at budget, like mid-year for our trash service. I'm like, what the heck is, is going on here? And, and looking at our Republic bills, I mean, we were being charged for, um, the pickup, but then we were being charged for the tonnage, and then we're being charged for, um, fuel, uh, recovery fees. So our costs were just through the roof, and, um, so we looked at, well, what are our other options? We didn't have a, a contract with, uh, Republic, which they simply advised, said because we didn't have a contract in place, you know, essentially, we're kind of at their, their whim. Well, at least there is a competitor in the area, and that's Arrow Waste. And so we looked at, at them and what their costs were, and, and, and got estimates which were, uh, substantially cheaper. Um, I made the switch. Uh, Republic has since kind of come back to us and wanting and saying, hey, if we can put you under a contract under your existing agreement, uh, we can lock in a, you know, a flat rate with just the, the simple increases and not have the extra, uh, fees involved. Um, so I think even with your four-and-a-half percent increases, I think we're, we're still sitting, um, in our, in a really good, uh, position compared to where we have been, and then really kind of locking that pricing, you know, at least for your, your next, um, three years. And as Republic, the way they reapproached it was that, well, keep it with the same terms as the other agreement. Essentially, that's kind of what's gonna help, uh, protect us instead of having, negotiating a separate commercial agreement that often has language that says that they can pretty much, you know, increase your rates pretty substantially at any time, um, they'd like anyways. Um, in fact, we had that issue initially with Arrow Waste in the agreement that they were proposing was had this terrible terms, like, we're not going to engage in that. And so they said, well, fine, we'll, we'll agree to this without, you know, a month by month essentially. So we made the change, brought our costs down, but, um, I hear your concern. Uh, four-and-a-half percent isn't, isn't ideal, but I think given the.
It's roughly fifty percent if you crunch, crunch the number. It's substantial.
Wow.
So, um, and, and primarily, it has to do with the environmental fee, environmental and fuel fees that are being just dissolved, right?
Chris?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just for clarification, we, we went to Arrow, and they said they would do it for less, but there was no guarantee that they would continue that?
It's a month-by-month contract, yeah, so it's, there's.
Okay, and I remember when we were talking about this for, before, you had suggested, I thought you said you were gonna go back to Republic to see if they would negotiate on that four-and-a-half.
I did make the ask, um, and they're not moving from that number.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, Councilmember Peter, I apologize, it's not even a month-by-month contract. There's just no contract at all with Arrow Waste, so they could raise our rates at any time, essentially.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mayor. Just to clarify, this doesn't begin until twelve-thirty-one-twenty-five, right? The end of this year? According to the agreement, year one is effective date is twelve-thirty-one-twenty-five.
It would take effect now. Uh, I think for the, the price increase would take effect.
Price increase would be in January first.
Yep.
Is that correct?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, page.
The price increase.
Sixty-nine.
Yeah, I'm at page seventy-one where the column year one effective date, twelve-thirty-one-twenty-five.
Yeah, ask Mr. Witty where that, yeah, where that number came from, cause they drafted.
Makes sense what I'm asking?
Yep, I see exactly what you're asking. It doesn't make sense to me either, so.
So, so the effective date would be the date that the contract is approved by the parties, and then up until twelve-thirty-one-twenty-twenty-five. So that's just describing the first year of pricing, and then it would, uh, the, the CPI would kick in after that first year.
Yeah, thank, thanks, Jake. So the way that I would read this is that, I agree with you, is that typically the contract starts the day you approve it, right? They get signed. But the way I'm looking at this is that the effective date of it is twelve-thirty-one-twenty-five for those rates, even though those rates should be in effect when we start, and then they start the CPI increase on one-one-twenty-six.
Are you looking at the chart?
Yeah.
That's, I think that.
Charts are.
I think, isn't an effective date through?
No.
Twelve-twenty?
That's not the way.
What's the little dash after effective date?
So that, that, that should be a date range. There was a previous iteration of the contract that had like year two and year three. Um, but this is just explaining what the, the first, and, and I think what this does is this would align the CPI increase with the underlying service contract for residents. Um, I don't necessarily know. I'd have to go through my emails and see if this was something that Republic specifically negotiated. Um, but I do that, believe that's when like the first annual price increase
that.
I think if.
Occurs for the service contract.
I think if there was a space after date before the little hyphen, then it would be clear that that's reflecting a date range.
Effective date through twelve-thirty-one-twenty-five.
Effective date, which would be the date it's signed through twelve-thirty-one-twenty-five.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. The space probably would make it a little clearer that.
Yeah.
Talking about the effective date of the agreement until twelve-thirty-one, but I see.
Yeah, I get why.
Exactly what you're saying.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, this is roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Clark? Dean?
Yes.
Partner?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Stanton?
Yes.
Kind of wondering how Joe felt about that. All right.
So.
Uh, that takes us to, uh, public, the second public comment period. This can be about anything. Anyone in the room wish to make a comment? Anyone online wish to make a comment? All right, seeing no comments, we will move to correspondence. Nice note from Lisa Miflis on page seventy-four. Uh, and then we get to council comments. Um, Joe, you wanna start us?
Really interested in this, about sky, it's got, you know, the, the, you know, the understandings. I did a little bit of reading and research. A lot of their science is very important, especially on wild, wild aspects. Coincidentally, it's coming in, um, it's just, uh, interesting, but it's coming in officially on Friday, and they're sitting in the church, and they're right by the marsh.
Hmm.
Eagle Hospital. Two massive nests, so we must just sit, you know, watch now, and I saw they have little heads top of them.
Oh, that's awesome. That is so cool.
Yes. Anyway, just wanted to share that. Um, just, I, I wanna, uh, uh, thank the staff for putting such a great, uh, packet together. It's nice to have all these great reports, from the engineer report to also the, uh, the planning, uh, planning report, uh, from our planning commission, uh, as well. Um, in, I think he kind of went by what you started doing. Um, you know, with that case by case, I really enjoy that. I know we didn't have that before you came on, and I'm glad that you're still doing that. Um, I, I think that, uh, he did a wonderful job putting that together. I always like seeing the police report, um, as well as the engineer report. I thought that was really interesting, and I appreciate, it's a great packet, that's all I want to say.
Yeah.
Um, very mindful of the comments on, on events, security and safety, and, and I do think we should probably continue as a council and, and staff to kind of think about how we can reimagine our events to make them safer. I, I mean, maybe someday when we have to really do some infrastructure work on Butler Street, we take a look at doing something like a lot of communities have done with, you know, bullards that, that are embedded in the pavement that you can raise, and you can just, you know, quickly, it's, I'm sure it's not gonna be cheap, but, you know, things aren't getting safer unfortunately. So maybe we, we do need to really factor in long-term, you know, given, given the importance of events and parades to our tourist economy, to find a way to, um, you know, to make just this kind of iconic stretch, Butler Street, safer, and, and in a way that's easier on staff. It might take some investment in the long term, but uh, it's, it's an important discussion, and I, and I value getting the feedback from the fire department on it.
Um, just congratulations again to our city manager, Ryan and Lisa, on their wedding. Congratulations and well-deserved time off and all of that. So congratulations. I thought that was fantastic. Um, thanks to our clerk for a great election, and everyone who helped with that, our volunteers, um, in our community that always step up to be there for, um, our elections. And Memorial Day is only a couple of weekends away, so I know all the businesses in town are really busy right now, um, getting their places ready for this, um, upcoming tourist season. So, um, congrats to all the businesses working so hard.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, congratulations, Ryan, on, um, on your nuptials. Um, again, I want to echo Councilmember Muncie's comments about the packet. I've been, I've been very impressed with the level of detail that we're receiving from our city staff, and I know that takes time out of a very busy city staff day to prepare that information. So I want to say thank you, cause it is helpful. Um, I, I should have brought this up during the manager's report, but, um, the corner of Holland and Francis Street, the house, I've made this comment, I don't know how many times, they have now moved in, they have seats on the porch, and yet they continue to use the sidewalks for their personal use and diverting pedestrians. I really would like us to have an estimated time of completion to get those sidewalks in, and ideally before Memorial Day, cause it's a mess. And that's a main intersection of the town, and this is, I've lost count how many times I've asked about this. So I'd like to see a commitment from the property owners and from the contractor to get those sidewalks back in, so that's open for people to begin using. It's, it's gone beyond the point of acceptability, in my opinion. Um, also too, is, uh, Hoffman Street End. I was walking down, um, the docks on Saturday, and the Hoffman Street End, if you've not been down there, it's awful. It is, it is in bad, 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 bad shape. So I know that we made our commitments for the year for infrastructure. This is something I think we should take a serious look at, putting some money, getting some money out of the budget this year for that. It's, it's, it's terrible. And it gets a lot of heavy use for coral gables, as well as people that are gonna be going towards the new marker fourteen restaurant. Um, it's just not a good look for the city, so. Something I, I would recommend, we take a really serious look at and getting some work done this year on it. Thank you.
Chris?
Congratulations again, and, uh, I think things are starting to look really good. I know we've all asked about the sign on Blue Star and thirty-one, uh, thirty-one and Holland Street, and we kind of talk about it, and then it falls off. I was wondering if we could for sure get it, at least in a workshop, to figure out how we could take the money out, because I think it's critical. We have a sign there that says Saga Talk, so that people take that, take that, uh, right turn. Uh, and other than that, it's summer's here? Well, wait.
Um, I will add my thanks for the election workers. It was, it's a great group. It's a really interesting, uh, mix of residents, non-residents, um, young people, those of us who aren't as young. Um, and it really does take a, a village. It's a complex process, lots of checks and balances, but our clerk and deputy clerk do a phenomenal job of getting us organized, um, and on track. It was a little slow, but, uh, it was great, um, to have people come out and vote. So, and, uh, welcome. So, and, uh, welcome back. Congrats. Um, and with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, so.
Second.
All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Nope. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor Proton.